That's my experience. There's no more drag in the slate. They all go home.
It'll be that way where we get this East Water Line built.
1060.
Those people will go away for a while. Everything calms down.
So what's keeping you busy during the day? Grandkids?
They were. They're coming back now to hobby, so. I'm here too, but with my wife. So.
Just the cherry on top of the house? Like babies in a shoebox.
I don't know. I'd like to try and maybe get away down to the land and see where your grandkids are. We'll see.
Yeah, you should go before they lock everything down. Does your wife have any hobbies?
She makes wreaths.
Okay.
And does quilting and stuff like that.
So she does. Yeah, so this is a time for wreaths. You have got your fall wreaths, your Christmas wreaths.
I told her she should want them. I'd sell them. They're beautiful. Is she gonna do them?
Yeah.
She's still alive.
So speaking of quilting, I was in Lakewood, Colorado last week. They finally.
I grew up right near there.
Really?
Wheat Ridge, right next to it.
I've heard of Wheat Ridge. So their, my company's finally letting us travel. And we have, and I haven't met with jurisdictions in almost 18 months. We met with three jurisdictions in three days. Four Collins, Lakewood, and one. I was exhausted.
I bet.
We were so tired. We all said the same thing. We laughed like, we used to do this for a week straight. We did three days and now we're tired. But in Lakewood, they had a quilt. It was their 50th anniversary quilt or 25th anniversary quilt. And it had to be six by 10. And it was beautiful. And then they listed all the, all the women who quilted. It's a hell of a make it. Because it was like, there must have been 12 or 13 to make this.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the August 17th, 2021 Gilbert Council Meeting. Can I please have Councilmember Yentes lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Thank you. I'd like to ask Pastor Tim Allman of Christ Greenfield Lutheran Church to lead our invocation this evening. Hi Pastor, how are you? Thank you Pastor. We appreciate you being here this evening. Next, we would like to have the clerk perform the room call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke, I believe she may be online. And Council, thank you. And Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you very much, Chevelli. We appreciate that. Before we move into the next part of the agenda, I would like to just move the mayor's comments to the beginning because I think we have a couple of things that we just need to take note of. While we're also grateful for the increased rain this monsoon seeps and we also have seen some of the damage it has caused in communities around Arizona. Flash flooding that devastated Globe in Miami due to the telegraph fire burns scars. And this past weekend, our neighbors in Hila Bend were struck by massive flooding that has taken two lives and displaced hundreds. We want to send our condolences to all the families affected and encourage any Gilbert resident who would like to help Hila Bend to contact us so that we can put you in touch with the different organizations providing relief. The past few days have been very difficult for not only our Gilbert veterans, but all veterans that served in Afghanistan and Iraq. I've had the opportunity to speak with so many veterans throughout our community and the East Valley who are worried about the people and families they met and worked with in Afghanistan. These quote, "real people with real lives just like you and me are struggling." I borrowed that quote from a veteran who served in Afghanistan. If you are a Gilbert veteran or any veteran needing any kind of assistance, please reach out to me and I will work to get you help. Our community and our country owe our veterans and all the Afghani people who risked their lives our thanks and support. I'd like to move on to presentations and proclamations. We have one proclamation and that is declaring September 1st, 2021 as Second Responders Day. And I would like to invite the ladies from Ascend Down to join me. Hi Shawna, how are you? And I don't, I don't think that we've met. I am Bridget Peterson. Hi, nice to meet you Eloise. It's very nice to have you here. A resolution of support for a day of, to recognize second responders. Whereas second responders provide support to first responders have served the community throughout the pandemic, helping to put lives back together during a critical time of emergency. And whereas the pandemic impacted the entire community and caused trauma and suffering to many and second responders who includes staff from both the public and private sectors have risked their health to provide support to ensure that people can thrive in the face of adversity. And whereas second responders go above and beyond to provide numerous services to the public such as outreach to people experiencing homelessness in the deadly summer heat, providing meals and wellness checks for homebound older adults, providing counseling and mental health services to those in crisis, providing assistance with housing search and stabilization, ensuring families do not go hungry, helping domestic violence victims safety plan so they can flee violence, providing transportation to medical appointments, assisting with securing jobs and finding unique ways to serve the public during the unprecedented challenges of COVID-19. And whereas many could not have survived the pandemic without the vital services provided by second responders. And now therefore, I, Mayor Bridget Peterson, Town of Gilbert and the members of the Gilbert Town Council express our support of September 1st, 2021 as Second Responders Day. Thank you for all you've done. Do you want to just give a little recap of what Ascend has done over the past year on behalf of our community?
Thank you so much. At Ascend, we have provided services through the pandemic without any interruption. We've been in office. We have continued to serve. We experienced 100% increase in our home delivered meal requests. So as many of our seniors were unable to come in to the senior center for lunch, we have stepped up. We've doubled our routes to make sure that they get us a meal every day delivered to them along with the wellness check. The CAP Office, which Eloise is an integral part of, has, is currently still serving in like what we normally do in a year. We're doing in two and three weeks right now. Just the demand for assistance has just increased to such a high level. And Eloise and her team just do an amazing job responding to the requests. There's still things we need to do. It takes a little while to put an application together, but working with landlords, working with the community, we're working with those experiencing homelessness, with those experiencing food insecurity, and just really trying to be there to make sure people can get the support they need through the pandemic.
Thank you, because we wouldn't be able to do what we do for our residents without Ascend and the CAP Office. And I would love to have you hold this and take a photo with, right there. Next, we will move to communications from citizens and I will pass the mic to our Vice Mayor. Thank you Mayor. We have four requests this evening to speak during communications from citizens. We'll begin with Allison Bones, followed by Nikki Reber. Please walk all the way to your right and come down the stairs to the podium. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. The communications from citizens portion provides our citizens opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of open meeting law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, we're here to listen and we cannot respond beyond thanking you for your comments. When you come to the podium, please state your name and place of residence and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal tax, political speeches, or threats of political action are inappropriate and will be grounds for ending the speaker's time at the podium. Thank you, Allison.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Councilmembers, Gilbert community and guests. Thank you for this opportunity to share my son's story and provide awareness about a rare disease. As they said, my name is Allison Dambrosio-Bones and I'm the founder of Team for Travis. In 2018, I was forced to walk through the flames, my world set ablaze by the two unfathomable tragedies just five months apart. That March, I watched my husband Jamie lose his three-year battle with colorectal cancer. Just five months later, I experienced every parent's worst nightmare when our four-year-old son died suddenly and unexpectedly. Travis, as you can see in your hand out there, appeared to be the picture of health, a vibrant, kind, funny, and smart child who loved solving puzzles, making people laugh, and helping around the house. But there was a silent killer lurking in Travis that was never discovered. Travis was born without a spleen, a rare disease called isolated congenital esplenia. On a Friday night in August 2018, Travis developed a high fever. Three different medical professionals dismissed it as simply the flu, but it wasn't the flu. Travis was dying of sepsis brought on by his small body's inability to fight a bacterial infection that a child with a spleen would likely survive. By Saturday afternoon, I faced life without my beloved son. Travis's esplenia was diagnosed only during the autopsy. Completely devastated, I couldn't let Travis's light be extinguished so easily. Encouraged by loving friends and family, some of whom are here tonight, I set about doing something to prevent other families from experiencing such a tragedy. This was the beginning of Team for Travis, together ending esplenia mortality. In March 2009, the IRS granted us 501(c)(3) status as a nonprofit organization. And we began raising awareness, attending rare disease events, and learning how to advocate to US Congress about key legislation like the Newborn Screening Saves Lives Act. Additionally, we are raising money to be able to fund our first grant in support of esplenia research. We've partnered with the leading medical researchers who discovered the genetic mutation that causes the disease. In the years since Travis's death, we've also joined the Every Life Foundation for Rare Diseases. And I actively serve on their newborn screening working group and I sit on their Rare Disease Legislative Advocates Advisory Committee. That committee helps develop guidelines and provides training for helping other rare disease patients learn how to make their voices heard on Capitol Hill. We've also successfully enlisted Congresswoman Debbie Lesko and Senator Kirsten Sinema to join the Rare Disease Congressional Caucus and co-sponsor legislation impacting rare disease families in Arizona. And we'd like to invite you Mayor and Councilmembers to come out on August 25th, the third anniversary of Travis's death, to see the historic Gilbert Water Tower lit in orange, Travis's favorite color. And additionally, Governor Doug Ducey has declared a proclamation naming August 25th as the Team for Travis Esplenia Awareness Day in Arizona. While these actions show Arizona outpacing the rest of the nation in supporting rare disease advocacy and research, there are always opportunities for greater advances. You can help by asking Senator Sinema and Senator Kelly for their support in co-sponsoring Senate Bill 350, which is the Newborn Screening Saves Lives Act. And that bill has already passed in the House of Representatives. We invite anyone who's interested, if we have any golfers with us in the audience tonight. We are hosting our first golf event at the Top Golf Facility in Glendale and that's going to be on Sunday, October 17th. And finally, we invite you to visit our website to learn more and consider a donation to support the launch of our first research grant. And when you exit tonight, there are some brochures. And I yield, I have no time left, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Allison. Our next speaker is Nikki Reber, followed by Maureen Hop.
Hi, I'm Nikki Reber. You guys have heard from me before when we fought for the go-karts or fought against them. I understand that you now have, I couldn't come to the last meetings, but I understand that you have at least entertained new rulings for the Town of Gilbert on sound and how loud it can be and when it has to be measured. And I simply came tonight to encourage you to continue to look at that and to make things better for everybody who could either be affected by the go-karts or who could be affected by the sandbar. We're going to be watching this real close. We're going to stay on it. You need new rules. And I understand you've looked at what other cities have done and you know that to get those new rules, going to make a lot of other places have to sit up and take notice because they can't go backwards. They can only go by the new stuff. And I'm here to ask you to please stay on that. Let's not drag this thing out for months and months and months. Find somebody within Gilbert who's going to really look at this and bring it to you and say, here, we found a good deal. Let's do this. Let's make things better for the citizens of Gilbert. Thank you.
Thank you Nikki. Our next speaker, Maureen Hop, followed by Jessica Giroux.
I have a written statement I'd like to read. My name is Maureen Hoppy. I live in Gilbert, Arizona. And quite frankly, Mayor, it's time for you to resign. I've already sent this letter to everybody here on the board. I think it's time for you to hear it. You need to start representing the citizens of this town. Okay? You need to start listening and putting us first instead of all of your little friends that are destroying our community. Paybacks, money doesn't cut it anymore. I've lived in Gilbert over 20 years. I have a growing concern regarding your ability to effectively govern and question your ability to make sound and reasonable decisions regarding our town. It's time for you to look in the mirror and see what your constituents see. Remember, you work for us. We pay you. It's well known you've had numerous ethical complaints filed against you. Do you understand what it means to govern with integrity, honesty, and good strong moral values? Especially when you've been elected by the people? Or did you forget those qualities at home? Should integrity not be an important key attribute for an elected official? Where does the buck stop? And yes, I'm talking about money. You have chosen to align yourself with investors to protect their interests as a priority rather than protect the citizens of our great town. Our town is being destroyed by you. You've ignored the residents of Morrison Ranch. I don't even live there, but I know what's going on. Will you ignore the rest of us who live in this community? We all have a right to be heard and have our concerns within the continuous rezoning and influx of apartment buildings, dense apartment complexes no less. At the expense of our great small town and safety is being jeopardized. Why? You do know the answer. As a last note of concern, healthcare benefits for town employees? Since you support taxpayer-funded sex change surgery, will you be more inclusive covering all elective surgeries from any employee who suffers from any form of dysmorphia? I'm sure there are biological women who gave birth to children and would love a tummy tuck, breast lift, or even breast implants. These are natural byproducts of true biology. Or are you discriminating against straight heterosexuals? I suggest you understand that you gave away our hard-earned money as taxpayers, as bonuses to the entire staff of the Town of Gilbert for working through the pandemic. We, the taxpayers, often took pay cuts, lost hours, loss of careers, or even worse yet, were essential workers and did not have the luxury of getting paid while working from home three days a week. It's time you realize, Major Bridget, Mayor Bridget, popularity does not mean qualified. I sincerely urge you to resign immediately because you are not qualified to serve office.
Our next speaker will be Jessica Giroux.
Madam Mayor and Members of the Council, my name is Jessica Giroux. Many of you know me as Jessie. It's my honor to stand here before you today and exercise one of the most precious rights I have, my voice. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in the process. I am here tonight to apologize. I haven't been the best neighbor. Nothing in particular, other than not trying to be my best. I do things here, there, well, and in some cases have had the blessing of being recognized for those efforts. But I must confess, oftentimes I feel as if I really should be doing more to live up to some of those accolades. Life has a funny way of happening and getting in the way of living sometimes. And when you experience big life changes, you get the opportunity to try to live again. That's a very poetic way to insert a nod to my amazing son Connor Giroux, who many of you know and who re-released from his famliness this past week. That said, I'm figuring out what it is I am to do now that now that my family has been raised and my role is shifting. My next nod is for my incredible husband Jason. That amazing man and I have had the opportunity to not only grow a beautiful family here in Gilbert, but a thriving business as well. The successes we have been able to achieve since moving our family and business to Gilbert in 2013 are intricately intertwined with the relationships that we have formed through the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce. We are forever lifetime members of the Gilbert Chamber and are so very grateful that we picked a town that supports the chamber to the extent that Gilbert does. Because of that, I have had the opportunity to meet most of you face to face and been blessed to participate in activities all around our amazing town right alongside of you as my neighbor. That is one of the things I will fight to keep about Gilbert. Our town leaders are our neighbors. They are eating in the same restaurants as us, filling up gas next to us, walking their dogs in the parks with us. Bonds and friendships and partnerships are all natural welcome parts of living in community together. The blessing and curse of being the biggest small town. People want to hold on tightly to the past and others want to skyrocket to the future. Gilbert is stuck between needing to do both. Honor our past while planning well into the future. These are always hard decisions. And being on the cusp of watching the entire Far East Valley explode for the next 20 years as progress keeps moving forward gives us a very unique perspective. Like many others, I love to read my own words, so I post on social media a lot. I need to put my words, my experience, my passion into avenues that are going to affect actual change. I've been wasting it fighting on Facebook posts and being exasperated trying to educate neighbors on basic things like how to be decent to one another or use the 311 app to get your garbage can fixed. Someone told me today that I must just like to argue and manipulate things. At that moment, I realized I have to turn my voice and point it to where it will make a difference. I have one more nod I must make before I close my statements, and that's to my son Tyler. He and others like him are the reason why I have a dream and a dream that Gilbert will be a part of, that I will share with you soon enough. God gave me a son with autism to raise into adulthood and beyond so that together his voice and mine can bring an affordable housing community to the East Valley. And I would love for my son to be able to continue to call Gilbert his own. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our communications from citizens. I will move to the consent calendar. We have two items that will be pulled from the consent calendar for discussion separately. Those will be items number nine and 12. May I get a motion to approve items two through eight, 10, 11, and 13? So moved.
Second.
Please say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Please say nay if you're opposed. The motion passes unanimously.
For the record, that was an aye also, sorry.
Councilmember September said aye. We'll move on to item number nine. Councilmember Yentes.
Thank you, and I think I saw Kristen here. So I just have a couple of questions on this item. So I think I understood everything that was in the packet as far as what this policy change is, but I wanted to just ask a couple clarifying questions. So am I understanding correctly in that this just applies to injuries that occur on the, while you're on the job and obviously your official capacity as an employee?
Yes, Council, Councilmember Yentes, Mayor and Council, that is correct. This is only specific to on-duty injuries and specific to those that are deemed as catastrophic, which are outside the normal work-related injuries.
Okay, my follow-up. Is this a policy that extends to all of our departments and employees? Or is there some different protocols that are set up for public safety or?
No, this extends to all. So for example, while it may be more likely that a public safety employee would have a catastrophic injury, if a public works field employee were to be hit by a car while they were working, this could have the same impact on that employee as well.
Okay, and then I, just a couple more questions, I'm sorry. Thank you for bearing with me. Do we offer any competitive policies to our employees that have to do with like long-term care or long-term disability or?
Yes, we do have both short-term and long-term disability. And depending on the injury and when they are deemed modified or and depending on the injury and when they are deemed modified or maximum medical improvement, there are certain steps that come through. Typically, those can come into play, but until we know they're either at maximum medical improvement, those things don't necessarily come into play. So these are just not often that this would happen and we would fill that gap. So this is kind of a gap filler on those rare occasions that we have a catastrophic injury. We fortunately haven't had one in the past.
And there's no distinction between if, I mean, obviously, I think the town, you know, puts an emphasis on training and compliance with safety protocols on the front end, but there's no distinction between if this was, you know, a failure to kind of abide by our safety policies, differentiating that with, you know, things that are just completely outside of, you know, the employee's control.
Yes, Councilmember Yentes, we cannot not cover a work-related injury if it was caused by not following safety protocol. The not following safety protocol would be a disciplinary issue. The work comp injury would still be covered.
Okay, and I think my last question is just, is there any comparison with, I guess, private sector benefits with this policy? I had asked a couple people just in private sector HR, because I was just curious, because I had never seen a particular policy like this, but my wealth of knowledge is not as extensive as yours is on HR, so.
Yes, Councilmember Yentes, we didn't look at private sector, and when we looked at public sector, it varied quite a bit. Private sector is typically going to be fully insured, as opposed to most of our municipalities are self-insured. The law requires that you provide 66 and two-thirds of the employee's base salary. So some places will limit to just what the law requires, and then others extend that. And our interest was being competitive with other municipalities and then certainly addressing a catastrophic injury so that it doesn't cause additional hardship to the employee and their family.
And that 66 two-thirds is obviously what the current policy is at.
Yes.
I think that's all my questions. I just had a couple comments if I might, Mayor. I think I understand, obviously, what the department's trying to do and move towards this policy, and I do think and hope that they are rare occurrences. My only hesitation is I feel because we're kind of making a lot of these policy decisions in piecemeal, it's hard to kind of grasp the totality of benefits that we're offering. And so, you know, the ratchet continues to kind of turn very, maybe incrementally and in what would seemingly be insignificant ways, but without, you know, kind of seeing it in the context of our full benefits, our full pensions. I feel like, you know, what we're providing right now does meet our obligations as an employer. I think we've got some other really good policies in place. We get the emails where, you know, other employees can help out with their, you know, time and compensate, you know, their colleagues that way. I think that's a really good policy we have in place. And so just for that, I think, you know, I just asked to vote on this separately tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments on this subject? May I have a motion to approve item number nine?
Move approval.
Second. Please say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Nay.
Please say nay if you're opposed.
Nay.
Thank you. The motion passes six-one. Our next item is item number 12. Councilmember September.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to pull this from the consent agenda. This is a motion to approve the resignation of Carl Blumfeld, who's a planning commissioner, actually, he's our chairman of our planning commission today. And just take a moment to recognize Carl for all of his efforts over the years. Carl was a planning commissioner since 2014, since March of 2014, here with the Town of Gilbert, and he and his family have been here for many years. We are going to miss him dearly. And, you know, for all of his years, and I got to serve on the planning commission as well before I became a council member. Carl just was, just had a very calm, disarming demeanor. He was always open to listen to staff, to residents, to other planning commissioners. He's always very sensitive to that and just very dedicated. The long nights that I know we had when I was on planning commission, and he had many more years than I had. He's provided a lot of insight into the developments that have occurred here in Gilbert since 2014, and I'm so proud to have gotten to know him and work with him on the planning commission. So I just wanted to recognize Carl in that way before we vote.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Vice Mayor, I'll say that I served with Carl Blumfeld on the planning commission also, and I've watched him be a very steady, calm voice on the planning commission since 2014, and he will be missed. You're right, Councilmember September, thank you for pulling this off so that we could just say a few words.
Thank you. May I get a motion to approve item number 12?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes six-one. And that concludes our consent calendar this evening, and we'll move on to the public hearing. Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the laugh. Councilmember September, I'm sure that Commissioner Blumfeld will appreciate that. Now we'll move into the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have three items on the public hearing. One zoning case, number 14, and then two liquor licenses, numbers 15 and 16. Does anyone want to hear a separate presentation on 15 and 16 or just 14? Just 14? Just 14? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on items 15 and 16. I do not have anybody wishing to speak. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table for a motion.
A motion to approve item 15 and 16.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Yentes and a second by Vice Mayor. Please say aye if you approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay if you do not approve. That motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. We will now move to item 14, zoning hearing, item Z 21-01, to conduct approval of findings and adopt an ordinance for the Brundet Building. This evening, we have Amy Thames headed to the podium to do a presentation on behalf of staff. I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and thank you, Amy.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Members of Town Council. I'm Amy Thames. I'm standing in for Sidney Bethel this evening. We are here this evening to discuss the Brundet Building. Let's see if we can get it to go. What's the trick? Okay, let's try. Oh, yay, it moved. Okay, we've got it now. So the Brundet Building is located between Page and Cullen Burr in downtown Gilbert on Gilbert Road. You'll recognize the location because about in 2019 to 2020, three buildings that represented the site were removed in preparation for.
Would you please move your microphone closer? Thank you.
Oops, now we've lost the PowerPoint. There we go. Let's try again. Technical difficulties. All right. So there you can see the site that is located on Gilbert Road. It's between the Farmhouse Restaurant and the Norwoods Furniture Store. And it does encompass the alley behind where there's parking adjacent to Water Tower Park. The applicant's request for this rezoning is to increase the height allowed within the Heritage District for this site from 55 feet to 68 feet. The clicker doesn't like me. Oh, there it went. All right, the guiding documents for this, I just want to sort of build the background of this a little bit. The guiding documents for this is the 2018 redevelopment plan, which is the guiding concept for the downtown. It is particularly to Gilbert Road. It speaks to views, to preserve the water tower, blending the architecture and the building massing within the area, and speaking to historic architecture and historic presence and character. So with that, there's also, I'm going to go on to the Heritage District Design Guidelines, which were adopted this last spring. And they speak to massing, breaking up of massing of buildings. They speak to movement both vertically and horizontally and preference to two- to three-story buildings along Gilbert Road, which is considered the historic road within that document. The architecture should be late 1800s, early 1900s architecture. And once again, the Gilbert Road is the historic corridor within downtown for these documents. With that being said, you can see that the only request that the applicant was asking to deviate from the zoning code is the 68 feet, four stories, to increase it from 55, four stories. All the other setbacks and other requirements would be met. So you can see on the site plan here, which is just a conceptual bubble diagram, that there would be outdoor seating both on Gilbert Road and to the rear toward Water Tower Plaza, as well as some common areas in the first floor and common entrance on the north side. With the height request, you can see a conceptual massing model shown here. This is not the architecture. We have yet to see the building through the design review process. So this is solely looking at the massing of how the shape is filling the site. And you can see here, one of the conditions of approval that was applied by the redevelopment commission when they heard this item was a 50, or not 55, was a 15-foot building step-back, not a setback, a step-back from Gilbert Road. That is to push the upper level, the fourth floor, back 15-foot minimum in order to add some relief to the elevation of Gilbert, on Gilbert Road. In addition, the applicant has added, though this was their choice, the balconies that are on the second and third floor, as well as activating the first floor area with outdoor public open space, which is required by code. With the model that is shown on the right-hand side of your screen, that does give you an idea of what the floor plates would look like, and that shows you where the mechanical well that is on the fourth floor roof, which is the additional height that we're discussing this evening, would occur and how that sort of lays out behind the trees there on the left side of that cross-section. And here's a higher-resolution version of that, with the red line being the bottom of the mechanical well as it sits on the fourth-floor roof building. So you can see the AC units and other units represented in the little rectangles. Three other items that the redevelopment commission applied to this zoning case as conditions of approval were the 10% net building area dedicated to landscape outdoor spaces, three trees on each balcony, six trees on the roof. And this was to soften the massing of the massing model and the building because the building was being perceived with all these landscape features. But if you took the features away, staff in the redevelopment commission were concerned that the building would not be perceived in the same way. The same character of the building would not be achieved, and it would solely rely on the massing and whatever skin is put on the massing to meet the requirements of the design guidelines as well as the redevelopment plan. And with that, the trees and the landscape as shown became very vital to the success of this building. But they also recognized that the height of the trees and the scale of everything to do with both the massing and the trees of the landscape was also very important, and they didn't want a large tree that would further block the water tower views to occur. So they put a height limit at 20 feet for any of the trees, which would keep it to a small to medium tree. The species of trees will be discussed as part of the design review process and will be through the redevelopment commission. With that being said, these are a few massing models that the redevelopment commission saw during their hearing process. They're for reference only and will not be adopted in the zoning ordinance. And this is facing the Water Tower Plaza with the rear of the building. And there's the water tower to show you, looking from the northwest toward the building. I want to address public comment. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held as part of the pre-application process. Various members of the public spoke. The main concerns were compliance with the building height, limitation of 55-foot, and disrupting the views of the Water Tower Plaza, or water tower in the Water Tower Plaza, particularly from the east, impacting the Farmhouse Restaurant. The owners of the Farmhouse are concerned that their historic building foundation would be negatively affected by this construction. And then the existing continuation of potential alleyway as well as a pedestrian walkway that is required through an easement, an easement agreement with the town, through Norwoods Furniture, and then parking concerns overall with the addition of significant office space and restaurants coming into downtown, which parking is addressed through an administrative use permit and is not an item that is affected by the PAD. The redevelopment commission discussed this in length at the April 21st meeting. They did apply the four conditions of approval that I noted in the presentation. In addition, they were generally in support of the project. They thought that it had a lot of interest in massing movement and character and had a lot of potential to really be a highlight of downtown on Gilbert Road. However, it was a split decision. It was a three-two vote. And there was some concern about the scale of the building and the visual impact, even with the step-back. And so they did motion to approve it three to two, recommend to a planning commission approval. The planning commission was held on May 5th. Once again, there was a lengthy discussion regarding the project. They had concerns about the trees on the roof and whether there was a safety concern, and that will be addressed during the design review process with the landscape architect of record concerning the height and views of the water tower were another major issue that was discussed. With that being said, the final vote was six-one to recommend to the Town Council denial of this project. So there was a split decision between the planning commission and the redevelopment commission, if you want to look at it that way. So this evening, there are two possible motions. One, you could vote with the planning commission to deny the project, or two, you could vote with the redevelopment commission and staff to approve the project. Both motions are provided to you in your packet, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. In addition, the applicant and the owner of the property are here this evening and have a presentation, if you'd like to see it, as well as I do know some neighbors and surrounding property owners are here to speak also. Thank you for that, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have any questions for Amy? Right, Councilmember Anderson?
One question, Amy. The overall height is listed as 55 feet. Is there an allowance in the code for mechanical equipment to exceed the 55?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers. The code allows for 55 feet to a flat roof, for a flat building, it is to the surface of the flat roof of the building. There is a five-foot allowance for mechanical unit and parapet above that. So technically, to the top of parapet, it would be 60 feet.
Thank you.
Any follow-up, Councilmember Anderson? That's it. Any other questions for Amy at this time? We can always ask her to come back up after. Thank you, Amy. The applicant like to make a presentation?
Mayor and Town Council, very happy to be here. I'm Peter Kolopulos, President of Circle West Architects. And if you could, oh, there we go. So you're being handed the packet of the presentation we're about to go through. Let me just give you a little, a brief overview of what we prepared for everyone. Basically, we have an overview of the design. We'd like to touch on the Town of Gilbert Heritage Village Center design guidelines very specifically. We'd like to address why we're here. In other words, why are we recommending the heights and proposing the heights that we are? We'd like to discuss an overview and walk you around the building through the different perspectives and how we do not block any of the views of the water tower. And we'd specifically like to identify the area of the building in discussion so you really understand the overall dimensions or the geometric architecture of that, of that part of the building. I would also like to add, we're very excited to be here. We love the Town of Gilbert. We love the Town of Gilbert. We're the architects on the Culinary Dropout in downtown in the Heritage Village Center. We're very happy to be the architects for Todd and Tom Burdette. Okay, so what we want to do is highlight a little bit of the Town of Gilbert Heritage Village Center guidelines. So the image on the left where they speak about the guidelines, speak about the height limitations, and the diagram is very important. So when we first started the design, obviously, we wanted to be very respective of Gilbert Road and Heritage Village Center. What was pointed out a little bit, as you could see, highlighted in blue in north-south axes is Gilbert Road. We highlighted our site in yellow, maybe a little difficult to see, but most of the building is within and below the fifty-five-foot height limit, and we'll walk you through how we have achieved that. The maximum height facing Gilbert Road very specifically is forty-eight feet. We'd also like to add some of the information that we discussed a little bit with Amy and one of the council members about the overall heights. So the height allowance is the fifty-five feet with a plus-five feet of additional height restriction or parapets to block any mechanical equipment. Okay, all right. So essentially, what we've done is developed the design, that height that we're requesting is to screen our mechanical equipment, actually. Okay, so one of the things we took a look at in the code is what we internally call in our office "height by right." So if you took the code generically, if you will, with very little or no design, potentially, this is what you could end up with. You're going up with a flat building, there'd be, have a roof deck of fifty-five feet plus an additional five-foot parapet at six feet, at sixty feet. And you could see that even at that scale, the pedestrian views of the water tower are still intact. What we also wanted to do is identify the proposed design. So earlier, I mentioned about the forty-eight feet along Gilbert Road. So this is a pedestrian view on Gilbert Road. This would be where we would mark, well, we've highlighted our forty-eight feet. So from a pedestrian perspective, you would really, first of all, you would not block any view of the water tower. And second of all, the building element on top of the roof is stepped back thirty feet from the property line on Gilbert Road. So what we wanted to highlight in this perspective very simply is the fact that you're really not going to see much of the roof, other than the trees with the step back that we've And this is the overlay between essentially the box or the height by right allowable of sixty feet and where our proposed forty-eight feet would be. So we've developed a design that we feel is very respectful, enhances the Heritage Village Center, as well as respectful to the surrounding neighbors and, of course, the view to the water tower. Let me walk you through some of the views around the building from pedestrian as well as aerial views, just to get an idea of the overall massing. We took great pains to introduce step backs and setbacks, promote indoor-outdoor spaces at the ground level on the east and west elevations. There's a fabulous pedestrian connection between Gilbert Road and the Water Tower Park on the south end of the property. And then you could see the mechanical well essentially of what we're talking about. This is the view from the park. These images, what we wanted to do is really highlight what we would define as the eight feet that we're proposing, that we would like. Let me just take a step back. When I mentioned, why are we requesting the height that we are? Why are we building the design of the building at these heights? Through discussions with our client and what we would all like to do on Gilbert Road is literally bring in Class A tenants. Our firm is fortunate enough to work with some fabulous clients in addition to our current client, and we've designed multiple bars and restaurants, other community facilities. The floor heights that you see here are the heights that are required by these types of tenants. So for instance, our first floor height is at eighteen feet. The second and third floors are our office tenants. Those are at thirteen feet, four inches. Then, of course, we have the roof, outdoor deck, and dining area where we highlighted the blue. So the allowable height according to the guidelines within the Village Center introducing the parapet is at sixty feet. So the highlighted area of eight feet, that is what we're in discussions. Again, from the pedestrian view, you really, it's going to be imperceivable to see that. This is an aerial view highlighting the overall eight feet in three dimensions, so you get a better idea of what we're discussing here. And this is the planned view. So Gilbert Road is to the right. You can see that we've stepped back the building thirty feet from Gilbert Road. You can also see the highlighted roof deck with the planters that we've identified at forty-eight feet. This is a building cut section, if you will, to go through, identify the floor heights, identify the mechanical well, and highlight the eight feet. So what we wanted to do is really kind of walk you around the building and really focus on the specific area of what we're in, all in discussions about. We also want to be good neighbors. So our neighbor to the north, their building is actually built approximately nine inches to the south on our client's property. But what we've done is we've set back the proposed building approximately a foot. Their building isn't straight, let's say, so that's a plus or minus dimension, but we're going to be staying clear of their building from a construction standpoint. The orange is highlighting the pedestrian connection from Gilbert Road back to the Water Tower Park. These are some of the two-dimensional elevations. Our east elevation, and our south elevation, the west elevation, and, oops, our north elevation. We added in our, one of our renderings from Culinary Dropout, just to kind of give you some context. When I mentioned the eighteen feet, so kind of giving you an idea, the eve of the gable roof on Culinary Dropout is about eighteen feet. So it kind of give you an architectural scale of what we're talking about. And there's our proposed design. I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you'd like.
Thank you. I don't typically call applicants by their first name, Peter, but I don't know that I can pronounce your last name. I apologize.
That's, that's fine.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? We'll allow you an opportunity after we have public comment to come back up if we have any questions at that point in time, okay? Thank you. Go ahead and ask the public that would like to comment on this. I have a few cards with a request to speak. First, I invite Dora Lise Machado-Liddell to the podium, followed by Kirsten Traina. Dora Lise, I think you know this. Just give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
Mayor, excuse me, will there be any time limit? Okay?
Yeah, three minutes, please.
Don't start yet. Good evening, Mayor.
Is it on?
Start my clock now.
The mic has a button on the bottom, or on the, on the base.
On, but for some reason. Can you hear me?
It doesn't sound like there's a mic on.
Well, don't start my time yet. There you go. I got three minutes.
Don't forget to introduce, don't forget to introduce yourself, Dora Lise.
There you go. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Dora Lise Machado-Liddell. I'm a property owner in the Heritage District. I respectfully request that the current building height increase from fifty-five feet to sixty-eight feet be denied for the following reasons. I would like to address the staff report and the finding of fact. All the uses proposed, including restaurant, full-service bars, nightclubs, lounges, dance halls, and offices are permitted by right. If a bar, nightclub, lounge, dance hall is located on a rooftop of a building without any exterior walls, would that be considered an outdoor entertainment, and would that require a conditional use permit? A rooftop nightclub with a height of sixty-eight feet above all surrounding buildings does not have, which does not have any barriers, would absorb sound, would transmit noise throughout the neighborhood that is less than eight hundred feet away? Would the town allow me to build a home and increase the height of my building thirteen feet in the Heritage District to build a Class A residential home to provide three-hundred-and-sixty-degree views of my neighbors' backyards, a view of the town of Gilbert, which would include the water tower? Would the increase be beneficial to my neighbors? The staff report states that the proposed pad overlay and development plan are generally in conformance with both the redevelopment plan and the design guidelines. The maximum height is fifty-five feet. Such a change to sixty-eight feet does not conform to any plan. The statement is misleading and does not reflect the voter-approved general plan, council-approved redevelopment plan, and the Heritage District design guidelines, which is now in ordinance. The pedestrian path, whether on the north or south side of the development, is a condition of approval per an existing easement granted by the town. Why didn't the town staff include a copy of the easement in the supporting documents for your review? I ask how the applicant can request a change in zoning when the property may be encumbered by an easement. I ask the town how, on behalf of its taxpayers, give one property owner an easement that benefits the owner and not the citizens of Gilbert. I ask why the town would recommend the pad to be allowed on property that has an easement and negotiate with property owners that are in breach of said easement. I ask why the original easement was not terminated as a condition of the pad, or why it has not been terminated since they are and have been in breach of said easement. Additionally, I do not see any wording in the ordinance that reflects the six-foot pedestrian easement that the owner must provide as a condition of the path. The town cannot compare a six-foot pedestrian walkway to an alley that can be used by police, fire, and pedestrians. Giving the property owner the alley easement is short-sighted and not beneficial to the buildout of the district. I do not support taking away any property rights from any landowner. The proposal presented tonight is not a by right issue. I ask the council to follow the planning commission's recommendation for denial. Thank you.
Thanks, Dora Lise. Kirsten Traina, and then next will be Alan Fitzgerald. Kirsten, just introduce yourself and give us your city or town of residence, please.
I can't see anymore. My name's Kirsten Traina, and I am speaking on behalf of my husband and I. We live in Tempe. My business partners Joe and Cindy Johnston of Gilbert. My name is Kirsten Traina, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owners of Liberty Market. As I said, my husband David, and partners Joe and Cindy Johnston, who are currently out of town this evening, or they would be here. First, we are excited about the Town of Gilbert and the vision that they have and their longstanding commitment to the Heritage District. We are proud to be a part of such a vibrant community, along with so many businesses, including Norwood Furniture. We are, however, opposed to the variance and the proposed height change for this building, which is outside the guidelines recently sent for the Heritage District. These adopted guidelines, created by stakeholders and ratified by the town council and the mayor, were created to maintain the scale and the feel of the Heritage District. To so quickly disregard them sets terrible precedence moving forward. Essentially, to approve this variance communicates a disregard for the vision and the desire sent forth and agreed upon by the stakeholders, the town council, and the mayor. We look forward to the continued growth of the Heritage District. We love it deeply, but only so far as it remains within the guidelines previously set in the Heritage District redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Appreciate your time. Alan Fitzgerald, and then next will be Glenn Odegaard. Alan, please introduce yourself and give us your city or town of residence, please.
Good evening. Thank you all for your service during this course of conversation about this rezoning application. I've sent in a couple of letters. I'm sure you've all had the chance to read them. We've met in person to talk about some concerns. I'm a resident of Gilbert and have been for almost forty years. I'm also a business property owner in the Heritage District. There's that country song that says, "I was country before country was cool." We were a business in the Heritage District before it's what we see today. So we have a lot of investment in what the future and what the benefits have been to all of us in the downtown Heritage District, the safe, clean, vibrant conversation that started a number of years ago. I need to say that one of the best things that happened to the Heritage District was the redevelopment plan, followed then by the design guidelines. What did that give us as property owners? That gave us a map. That gave us an idea of what we could expect on how our business would be developing and growing and working within the constructs that were put together by stakeholders, by town council members, and by town staff. It was what we would say in business, we're going to do this. This is what we're going to do. It's nice to say, it's now time for you to actually act on that and do what we said we would do. Those documents are ratified and appreciated by every business owner and by the residents that live in the Heritage District. It's not just the downtown nightlife. It's the residents that have been there for thirty years and more. I'd like to comment, I'm an engineer. I design smaller things than buildings. And I want to say that the aerial views are not the views that we're going to see as residents and visitors in the downtown. The modeling, the mass modeling, as you call it, is a perspective that is deceiving. That's not what it's going to look like when I'm standing in my building or on the sidewalk, and that tower is not in view from the sidewalk. It is a deceiving drawing. The sixty-eight-foot easement actually is to the roof midpoint, or is rezoning. The midpoint is sixty-eight feet. The top of the roof is seventy-four feet. Let's not be unclear about that. It's going to seventy-four feet in this current proposal. That's forty feet, more than forty feet taller than the building that I own, which is the second story, the two-story building, which is the tallest building in that two-hundred block. We don't get to enjoy the aerial views, so I suggest that you look at the mass of the building from the sidewalk, where the people traveling and traversing through the downtown by vehicle or on foot will actually see it. I strongly request that we hold to the design guidelines and to the redevelopment plan because as a business owner and a property owner and a resident, this is what I've come to count on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alan, do you have a letter to read on behalf of Susan Pasternak?
I do, yes.
Okay, do you want to come back after that, after Glenn speaks?
I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you. Glenn Odegaard, please, and then we'll have Alan back to read Susan's letter. Glenn, just introduce yourself and give us your city or town of residence, please.
Yes, my name is Glenn Odegaard. I'm a general contractor who's lived and worked in Gilbert since nineteen eighty-five. We've initiated over seventy-five building permits by the town over the past thirty-six years. We are not in favor of the acceptance of the new Norwood building. Typically, when a variance is requested, the first thing the planner asks is how the variance can be justified, what special circumstances are related to this property, and why the standard law should not apply. Most times, examples are irregular-shaped lots or something out of the ordinary. There's nothing special or unique to allow Norwood to build a nineteen-foot extension above the already fifty-five-foot maximum height. It's kind of a misnomer what's the average height, because the nineteen feet is actually the accurate peak that most people will see from different perspectives. To put it in perspective, if you took Heritage Court Building, placed the farmhouse on top of that, that would equal the maximum of fifty-four feet, which is allowed. But Norwood wants to take the Heritage Court Building of thirty-three feet and stack twenty-one-foot farmhouse on top of that, and add another twenty-one-foot farmhouse on top of that again. So this excessive height is way too extreme and out of proportion. In no way is it justified, other than the owners wanting extra space for more income. Gilbert would be setting a dangerous precedent if it allows variances like this of over thirty-five percent above current regulations to start passing. if it allows variances like this of over 35% above current regulations to start passing. Another concern is the stability of the farmhouse building next door. I have worked on and underneath the farmhouse for 20 years. The farmhouse walls are made from unreinforced stacked adobe bricks 21-foot tall. There is no concrete foundation under these very heavy precarious walls. There are simply large river rocks dry stacked below the walls. There is no concrete or cement mixed in with or under the river rock foundation. This is a very precarious type of construction, and there's a very strong possibility that permanent damage will occur to the adjoining neighbor. Also, if they're doing the mechanical roof that's up there, that is probably maybe a 10-by-10 or 10-by-15-foot area that could easily be placed on a different location, lower, which could eliminate the whole upper roof. I think that would create an answer for the Norwoods and also give rid of the appendage on top of the building. So at some point in time, there may be a building that will serve great foot on top of the roof deck. But we urge the council not to allow them to serve lofty pie in the sky that will be 19 feet higher than it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. I'll have Alan Fitzgerald come back to read a letter on behalf of Susan Pasternak, and then Mary Ellen Freskas.
Susan is HOA president and could not be here because of conflict with running the HOA meeting tonight. So I will read her letter out loud, verbatim. Not in this letter, but Susan is a resident and has been a resident for over 30 years in the town of Gilbert. "To the leadership of Gilbert, I am writing to request your denial of the variance request filed for the proposed Brundrette Building, which would be built next to the Norwood Furniture Store in downtown Gilbert. I write this as a private citizen, I stand corrected, 45 years in Gilbert, and also as a president of the Groves of Gilbert Homeowners Association. Our community is within a half-mile of this site in downtown Gilbert, the Heritage District. Multiple members of our HOA have expressed concern that I present to you these objections. The excessive height of this building will obstruct visibility of our landmark, Gilbert Water Tower. Those of us that walk or bike to various restaurants and business establishments downtown would have that iconic view marred by this new building. No matter how visually pleasing this building is designed to be as a standalone, the dramatic height variation of the Brundrette proposed building would have it towering more than 40 feet above all the other buildings on that block of single-story legacy buildings. The visual disparity would definitely not be an appealing view of our Heritage District and downtown for our many visitors. The formal planning document for the Heritage District of Gilbert was generated within the last several years with the careful discussions and agreement of many of the Gilbert downtown business owners, the Gilbert Planning Department, and other stakeholders. The zoning height for the Gilbert Road Building was strategically agreed upon by these entities with a maximum height of 55 feet. I personally find it offensive that Mr. Brundrette, as a member of a family of downtown business owners, would knowingly plan, prepare, and propose a building which exceeds those limits just agreed upon by the community. Similarly, an architectural firm that develops plans for a building which knowingly violates the town of Gilbert zoning regulations is another affront and seems unethical. I can only assume that they spent much money for developing a building plan that was clearly out of compliance because they believe they could easily receive a waiver to their request. That disturbs me, and I hope it does you also. In summary, I strongly request that you, as the mayor and Town Council members for the town of Gilbert, deny the request for the height waiver on this building. Best regards, Susan Pasternak, Gilbert, Arizona."
Thank you, Alan. Mary Ellen Freskas, please. Mary Ellen, just introduce yourself and give us your city or town of residence, please.
Do I have to press the center button on all this? Oh, okay. Mayor Peterson and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mary Ellen Freskas. I have lived in Gilbert for 27 years. I've been a Heritage District property owner for 23 years. Both the applicant and his architect state that one of the prime features of this building are the views, specifically views of the water tower. How ironic. We, his neighbors, and fellow business owners will have our own views compromised, not enhanced. The rooftop bar, lounge, or restaurant, these are not public spaces. This is private property that will be enjoyed by his customers. The line of sight to the water tower will not be protected as is called out repeatedly in the redevelopment plan. Other factors that concern me include, number one, potential damage to the farmhouse; number two, noise from the rooftop bar; and the outdoor venue proposed for the west side of Norwood Furniture; number three, parking; number four, the required 20-foot trees that will become airborne projectiles in a monsoon. I'm confident the town staff has the ability to mitigate these. My last concern regards the lack of a service alley. Urban design standards require alleys. For the first time since I have attended meetings regarding this project, there's acknowledgement in the staff report that a contract exists between the town of Gilbert and the Brundrettes for an easement over the alley right away on the west side of Norwood Furniture. For 18 years, this easement has precluded all Gilbert residents and nearby businesses from enjoying a thruway to the pocket park and additional parking to the south of Norwoods. The pedestrian connection in this project is not provided by the applicant to comply with the prevailing documents. It is a condition of approval per the existing easement contract which I just spoke about. This is not an act of altruism. It is contractually required. Staff states that an alley is not needed here even though this very alley is specifically called out in the design guidelines. The objectives also read alleyways that are immediately recognized as a flexible pedestrian/auto environment. That's in the objectives for the design guidelines. Staff says that the Paseo will suffice, but the Paseo is a pedestrian and bicycle route that is car-free. An alley, besides providing trash removal and deliveries, is also an alternate route for emergency vehicles, something we should all worry about on a typical Friday or Saturday night in downtown Gilbert. I ask that you proceed tonight with the recommended motion on the signature page of the staff report to deny in accordance with the May 5 vote of the Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Peter, would you like to come down to the podium and give us any comments based on the comments you've heard from the public?
Okay, let me see if I can take them one at a time. So let's, let me address the views of the model, the perspectives that was brought up earlier. So in our software, obviously, we do this every day. These are real views. These are real perspectives relative to... We could set them at micro fractions of an inch vertically and horizontally. So I just want to say the views that we're presenting to you are real views based on all the 30-plus years of experience that we have. So I just wanted to communicate that. I'd also like to address the idea of the height. Now, we're focused on the height. One of the pages that I brought up, the second page, spoke specifically about the Heritage Village Center guidelines. And in the guidelines, if I could flip back to that, in the guidelines, they, I'm paraphrasing now, but it's a determination up to Town Council to look at the height, okay? And that's why we're coming to you. But what we also wanted to do is highlight very specifically the height that's in question beyond the 55 feet. So what we wanted to do is communicate to you the height that is beyond the current guidelines and show you and express in the drawings and the graphics how in no way does it block the view of the water tower, and in no way would it be viewed from pedestrians as people are walking around the Village Center because of the step-back specifically from Gilbert Road of the 30 feet and the fact that that height is really screening the mechanical equipment we have up on the roof. So those are some of my thoughts, but I'm happy to take any of your questions or comments.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Now is the time. No? Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, you're welcome.
Amy Thames, would you like to come back to the podium? And council members, do you have any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Anderson?
Thanks, Amy. A question you had talked about, and I know our decision tonight is not on design and what this is going to look like, but you had mentioned the design elements for this portion of the downtown. This doesn't meet that at all. Do you see this going through the process of a design review carrying through with this design?
Councilmembers, I'm trying to speak right into the mic here. You're correct. The massing for this building tends to be more modern, and the requirements of the design guidelines are traditional, turn-of-the-century. And when I say turn-of-the-century, I mean 1900s and 1800s. I date myself a little, thinking that's just the term. But we have discussed with the applicant ways in which they could manipulate the elements, the architectural elements of the building, such as the windows, by adding divided light, by adding other features to the windows that give it a little more historic character. There are ways to treat the balconies, the cornice, the parapet with dentil molding, using red brick or a brick similar in tone to red brick to help blend it with what the design guidelines request. There are other elements that can be added into the column features on the first floor, the fencing around the patio features, and other decorative elements such as lighting that can help blend it in to meet those historic character items. The massing itself tends to be more mid-century modern. I will agree with that. But I think the key is going to be how the applicant now, and I use the word "skin it," but how you address the exterior facade of the building in order to bring it back into compliance because it doesn't have to be an absolute representation of a building as it would have been built in that. It needs to address it. It needs to speak to it. It needs to, when you look at it, you say, "Yes, I understand that's historic, and I understand how it relates to downtown Gilbert." Metal will be an accent feature. It is not a primary feature. We do not expect to see black brick, black block. That is not a feature you would have found during that time period. So we have challenged the architect to really dive into his architectural portfolio and find those elements that speak to what is downtown Gilbert. And I do believe that this building can be properly addressed in those features during the design review process with the massing as shown. It will be a challenge, but I think it can be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amy Thames? Councilmember Yentes?
Just to take a step back, not the architectural term "step back," but could you just explain for everybody's edification the difference? There's been a lot of terminology thrown around as far as the difference between, obviously, we've got a rezone to a PAD and how that meshes or doesn't with a variance process. Could you just kind of explain some of those terminologies?
Certainly, Mayor, Councilmember Yentes. There is no variance process occurring, just for clarification. A lot of people like to use the term "variance" when we talk about conditions of approval or stipulations that are applied to an ordinance. This is a zoning process. A zoning has an ordinance. What the Planned Area Development, or PAD, stands for, allows for modifications to the base zoning districts within the Land Development Code. Height is a base zoning district standard. Another would be setback or step-back in some cases. And there's other various elements that are within the table that are considered base zoning district. Height is one of those. So through a planned area development, an applicant can request to deviate from that, and that is a condition of approval that the Town Council approves as part of the ordinance. A variance process is a totally separate process. So when you hear the word "variance," just in your minds, add stipulation or condition of approval in there. As far as this action is a Town Council action this evening, the recommendations were from Redevelopment Commission and Planning Commission. So the process is the Redevelopment Commission makes a recommendation to Planning Commission, who therefore makes a recommendation to the Town Council for the motion. Is there another element to that you'd like me to explain?
She said that was perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember September.
Thank you, Amy. So my question is, why, so this has a pitched roof. And the way we calculate the height of a pitched roof is using the median of the pitched roof from the eve to the peak. The median height is chosen. Why do we do that? Is that common in planning? Because really, the effective visual impact is the peak. So can you kind of talk through that a little bit?
Mayor and Councilmember September, I cannot speak to historically why they chose to measure height that way. It has been in zoning code for as long as I can remember as measured in that way. So you're correct. The ridge line is the actual height that people perceive and see, and most people would measure to the ridge line. So the mean elevation of a sloped roof is a little bit confusing to some. For a flat roof, it obviously is measured to the flat surface of the roof and then with the allowance for parapet for screening or mechanical screening. So the residents who spoke, who stated that really the height, as people would perceive it, as the general public would perceive it, is somewhat taller. I believe 70-foot was the measurement that was given. So why it was written that way in the code, I can't speak to it. As far as other municipalities, I think it varies based on municipality. I don't think there is a given norm.
Thank you.
Do you have another question? Councilmember Anderson?
No, I was just going to say, I take no responsibility for that either.
Started this with a planning director way back when. I just want to make sure that I don't forget about Councilmember Tilke. Councilmember Tilke, do you have any questions for staff before we go ahead and close the public hearing? Thank you, Councilmember Tilke. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Amy. Thanks for stepping in to present this this evening. We appreciate it. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to kick it off? Councilmember Anderson?
Just some short comments. I was the author of the first edition of the redevelopment plan back in the late '80s, early '90s. And while I can't remember whether or not height was specifically designed or placed into that document, I do know that there was language that talked about the concept of downtown Gilbert was to remain turn-of-the-century and low heights. There was not a desire to increase the downtown itself into something similar to what we've been seeing happening in Tempe, for instance. There was a desire to keep buildings low. I don't even know if we talked about at that time the iconic nature of the water tower. To me, the views of the water tower are still there. I'm not that concerned about it. It's the scale of the building that's concerning me. It just is out of scale with what is down in the Heritage District. And the mayor and I talked a little bit earlier about the downtown is kind of in three different areas or divided areas. We have the north part of the downtown with the nine acres, and we know that there's going to be a specific type of design, and it's going to be different. It probably won't look turn-of-the-century, or the materials may be different. But then there's the section which this building will be in, which is the Heritage District. And it has this very specific description of what it should look like. And I just don't think we're there with this, with the scale of this building. And then there's the south part of the district, which will have it probably... And then there's the south part of the district, which will have probably a different design to it. But I'm just not comfortable with exceeding the height limits by this much. I can see asking with a PAD overlay to maybe increase the height by five or 10%, but I just can't see. You all know how I felt about rooftop signs, and I just think this falls in the same category as far as I'm concerned. It just is too high. And I think they should be, should reevaluate how high that is. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Anderson. Who would like to go next? Vice Mayor?
I do appreciate the applicant's efforts in producing a product and providing renderings that allow us to visualize that. I really liked the pedestrian walkway near the building and the mat and the setback of the different levels. I find it a little bit unrealistic that some of those trees would be able to survive in planters in, on those levels. So I think that some of the architectural plans and some of the elements described may not stay the same and could change. I think the water tower is so iconic that the visual impact is going to be pretty significant, and I don't believe some of the exemptions are justified and that a successful design could be achieved within the allowable building heights. Looking at the plan, the first floor is showing 18 feet, and that's probably as tall as this room right here, not much less. So I wouldn't support the additional height.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember September?
Thank you, Mayor. After the planning commission hearing, I had an opportunity to meet with the applicant, and the applicant had a chance to explain to me a little better why the additional height was being requested and why the PAD rezoning was happening or needed. And a lot of that made sense. I also had a chance to meet with some of the stakeholders in the Heritage District subsequent to that meeting, and I got to hear their views on the additional height request and a couple other matters. The PAD rezoning is a process that we have here in Gilbert to provide relief to an applicant. And I feel like some of these heights that we're talking about going from 55 feet to 68 feet, if you're looking at the median of the pitched roof, or from 55 to 74, or even from 60 to 74, I feel like these heights, these deviations that are requested in this PAD are not seeking relief. I feel like it's like it's an overreach and trying to do more with a physical space that the code is trying to restrain, especially on the height. And I think facing Gilbert Road, this area, this close to the water tower, I know we have other taller buildings. I spent some time on Sunday morning driving this area, and I, from the different parking garages, I looked at different heights. And I feel like it might be easier to accept something like this if it was further away, either towards the north or the south. But right here in the Heritage District, it doesn't, it doesn't seem right. I'm excited about the opportunities that a building or a development similar to this could bring to the Heritage District. I just don't feel comfortable approving this much of a height request in this PAD. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember September. Councilmember Yentes?
I appreciate everybody coming and sharing your perspectives tonight. Obviously, I think what we're looking at is a beautiful rendition and some exciting concepts that I think that the applicant is striving for. I think it was mentioned that this isn't about property rights, and I would actually have to disagree. I think this is ultimately about property rights. But when I hear or see the word rezone in the system that we have for planning, that really is kind of what goes off in my head as the, okay, now we have to look at a set of facts and findings in a particular situation because what really maintains property rights of all surrounding users in cases like these is those general understandings. And so when you start to deviate from that and ask for an actual rezone, then people made investments and people made decisions about their property based upon those agreed upon and known facts about how the area was zoned. And so I think, you know, there was a lot of discussion about kind of the character of the area, and I don't know how closely or doesn't align with those standards. I find a lot of those measures to be very subjective and hard to wrap my mind around. But what I do think is an objective measure is that height. And it is, it is tied to, it's the essence of what the project is asking to be rezoned for. And so I think that kind of deviation from that is, especially in this area in the Heritage District, because height is such a big impact in various ways and an objective impact to all the users down there, which that collaboration came up with, you know, the standards that we have, and everybody made their own individual property decisions and investments based upon those understandings. And so that's kind of the basis of my concern with the project really is just the height. To councilman September, he took the words out of my mouth, and we've heard some or read some of the comments from the citizens that have these, because we've, we said we, there is precedent for higher buildings in this area, yes, but they are generally to the north and south. And so the objective impact to kind of those, that, you know, long stretch of middle users is not the same. So I think that's a unique set of facts to this project. So that's where I'm at on that.
Thank you, councilmember.
I'm not going to repeat the comments that have already been made, but I agree with most of them. I'll just add that I have a concern with the planning commission voting six to one against. I'm guessing they spent more time on this than I have, and they probably researched it much more deeply. To ignore their recommendation completely without some overwhelming reason, I'm just not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable taking the work that they put into it and finding against their recommendation without some very strong reason to vote against their recommendation.
Thank you, councilmember Hendricks. I'll wrap this up. Councilmember Anderson mentioned that we discussed this today, and I said that we had set a precedent with the rooftop signs by saying that the Heritage District is three sections, north, central, and south. And I consider the central section the core of the Heritage District. I expect the north section with the 9.1 plus acres where the Burger King corner is to develop differently. I think that's the future of Gilbert, and we will see that in that space. We have drive-throughs in that area right now that I think we will see, that will develop differently in the future, redevelop differently in the future. And then the core of the district, we have been very specific about the height, the uses, no entrances or driveways off of Gilbert Road. And we've been very specific about height being behind Gilbert Road. So not only, like the councilmember said, north and south, but also to the east and west. And we've seen the height move out from Gilbert Road, but right on Gilbert Road, we keep that, as it says in the Heritage District guidelines, the human scale. And then the south part of our district, I think we will see develop a little bit differently. But for me, this is the core. This is the cultural center. This is the heart of the Heritage District, and I want to see those business fronts that are not overwhelming to us. The tallest building that we have right now in that core is 46 feet tall, and then like the shortest tall building is about 20 feet. And that's a major difference when you look at those in comparison. And I did the same thing. I drove up and down Gilbert Road a couple of times today, not like I don't know it by the back of my hand and wasn't at Liberty Market today, but it, I just wanted to view it in a couple different perspectives as I was driving, and I realized that I thought that this height would be too overwhelming in that space, and I would like to see us maintain that core to a certain degree. So I wouldn't be able to support this this evening. Would anybody like to make a motion? And you have two?
Mayor, if I make just a reminder, councilmember Tilke's on the phone.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. And I purposely tried not to forget her a minute ago. Councilmember Tilke, do you have any comments?
Thank you, councilmember Tilke. I know I met myself with the applicant and didn't give him a decision on which way I would be going, so I think that he would have based his moving forward on the 3-2 from the redevelopment commission and the 6-1 denial from the planning commission, and it's his option. And if they would prefer that we, is it possible that we not take a vote on a motion and table this item, that they could bring it back with a different design and not go through the whole process?
Mayor, Amy, are you, one concern I'd have are the public notice issues because postings happen to happen. Do you have any idea if those would have to be reposted if that were the case?
I'm sorry, Chris, could you please repeat what you said regarding what your concern is?
So just a question, if the council were to move to table and to a date certain, would there be notice issues and we'd have to go through a reposting process for this hearing?
Mayor and staff and councilmembers, if it is continued to a date specific, then the posting is fine. If it is tabled, it would have to be re-noticed and republished in the newspaper as well as posted on site and mailings occur because that is not date specific. It basically puts it on hold. So there's two actions that could occur if you wanted to delay the vote.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Chris. So I'll bring it back to the council again, and if somebody, if you would like to make a motion to continue this, and we could get a head nod perhaps from the applicant, that we could give them six months or five months or six months? Six months? Okay, I'm getting a head nod from Mr. Brundrett that we could pick a date, well, we have our calendar on the agenda for next year, so we could pick the second date in January for our council meeting. We haven't, we haven't voted on that calendar yet, so we haven't solidified those dates. So I'm apprehensive to say one of those dates without voting on them yet, but we could continue it to the second meeting in January of 2022 if somebody would like to make a motion, and then Mr. Brundrett and his architects could go and work on something, a different plan perhaps.
I see Kyle moving over there. I don't know if that means something that he's...
Does Kyle have different, different update for us? Kyle Maris, Development Services Director?
Mayor, council, good evening. I think if the applicant comes back with a slightly different design but not a change in the request, we're probably in some safe space. If this is a change in the height or anything that's gone forward from redevelopment commission to planning commission then to council, I would recommend that we take it back to the redevelopment commission and almost start it over because it will be a completely new request at that point in time. And that would be the most transparent way to handle it. But if it's just a design and the height doesn't really change, I think we're probably okay.
So if we're saying that they would like to come back with a different height, that we'd be okay to continue it to a January date?
If the height decreases, we're probably okay with the design. If it's, if it's a major change, I would look at maybe taking it back to redevelopment commission and planning commission because they're the ones that gave you the recommendations based on this design and the height that was proposed.
That's what I wanted to make sure before we made any decision. So thank you, Kyle, for that. That means I think we should stick to the motions that we have available to us so that it can go back through redevelopment commission and planning commission. Eventually, it will go from, back to planning commission because they're the design review board also, and they'll get another opportunity. Vice Mayor? Oh, are they still conferring on that side?
Yeah, Amanda is...
Amanda stepped in. I just want to give staff a minute to make sure they work this out because I want to make the best decision possible for everybody concerned, and we had a lot of residents come out and the applicant.
Sorry, Mayor, if we can make one further clarification, if they do stay within the 55 feet, it can go straight to redevelopment commission for design review. It does not have to come back, and the zoning would be withdrawn.
Okay, so we can just make a motion either way tonight, oh, we can make a motion tonight even to deny it, and they can just come back with a new height to go to design review?
If they stay within the 55 feet, if they still exceed the 55 feet plus the five foot for the screening as...
Right. So it was likely they stay in 60 feet?
Right, for screening, not just to the top of roof. Then they could go straight to DR, and you could deny it or they could withdraw it. Those are two options. So you could continue it or table it, and then they could choose to withdraw and stay within the 55 feet, and then you would not see it again. Or they could come back at a later date, and that would leave the flexibility, or you can send it back to the redevelopment commission for redetermination.
Comments? Motion? Someone? Councilmember Anderson?
I think we should continue it and give him the option to work within that.
Okay, so as long as we continue to a date certain, correct?
That's correct. You could identify the second regular meeting in January of 2022 if you wanted.
Yeah. Somebody like to make a motion?
So move to continue to the second meeting in January 2022? Second?
I have a motion by councilmember Anderson, a second by councilmember September. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Brundrett and your architect. Thank you to all the residents that came out and the business owners and the stakeholders in the Heritage District. We appreciate your time. We will move on to our administrative items. I'll give everybody a minute to make their way out. It gets a little loud in here. As I mentioned a minute ago, we haven't voted on our calendar for 2022. That's our next item on our administrative items. Item number 17 under council administration is to adopt our council agenda for 2022. Could I have a motion to, and Chevelli and I chose to send this out to council this year to see if we get any feedback, and I don't think we had any feedback from anybody. So could I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
A motion by councilmember Yentes, seconded by councilmember Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Say nay? Hearing none, motion passes 7-0. Move on to boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have any reports from council liaisons for any of the boards and commissions?
I'll make an announcement on behalf of the Citizens Transportation Task Force because it's related with the pedestrian bridge having its grand opening next week, Thursday evening. It's from 6 to 8 p.m. on the west side of the bridge. So it's very exciting to have that. So, it's very exciting to have that new amenity for our residents and that additional connection to the Heritage District.
Thank you for mentioning that, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or reports from anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy items. In future meetings, we have none, we'll move on to communications. Report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Two items for you tonight. First, on August fifth, the Arizona chapter of the American Planning Association held their annual awards ceremony, and Gilbert received the award for the best regional or general plan for a jurisdiction with a population over fifty thousand. The presenter also cited the eighty-two percent approval rating by the voters, and the town's Heritage District was also recognized during the awards ceremony as great public place in Arizona. So, great recognition, a lot of departments and individuals behind that, development services and economic development particularly, but great recognition for well-done work. Also, last week, most of you are probably aware that the census bureau came out with the census counts. Gilbert's new census as of last year, I believe September, is two sixty-seven, nine, ten. Once the state's demographers office has a chance to then add the estimates for the preceding twelve months, we'll get a new number. But we're officially two sixty-seven, nine, ten, and there's a couple items of note I wanted to bring to people's attention. This was the first time the census was allowed online participation on it. Arizona, or I'm sorry, Gilbert had the highest response rate by our citizens in Arizona at seventy-eight point six percent. We were number two in the country with cities over two hundred thousand in population, again, by regarding resident response, and Gilbert's response rate was fourteen point five percent higher than the state average. And I just wanted to recognize Kelsey Perry with our digital team who ran that campaign, awareness campaign for our residents to make sure they participate in the census because of how important it is to our community. With that, that's all I have for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. So, we probably are already up another, almost six thousand residents because it averaged about six thousand a year, so over the count that we just received. Any report from council members? Seeing none, I did my report at the beginning of the meeting, so meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.